This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Okay, and first on our agenda is the public forum. You'll have up to four minutes to address the board. We will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, but you're welcome to come up. If you've signed up, and we'll make sure the microphone is on, so you just need to come up and state your name and address. And we have one person signed up for this evening, that's Kevin Kochansky.
Thank you, members of the school board, for letting me speak. My name's Kevin Kochansky. My address is 1507 Greenfield Drive. I want to talk really quickly about the Roosevelt Elementary School. That's the school where both my children go. I have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. It's great. We live seven blocks away from the school. It's been a phenomenal school, and I can't express enough how much it means for them to be able to walk to school, to be able to bike to school. It's an unbelievable opportunity because that's really their home. It's where we go to play on the playground equipment. We can easily go to St. James', but Roosevelt's just nicer. It's their home. It's where we go ice skating. It's where we go play basketball. We use the soccer field. There isn't an element of that school that we don't know very well. They haven't lost any balls on top of the roof yet, so I'm a little disappointed, but we'll get there someday, I'm sure. It's been a privilege because we've gotten to know so many of the staff there. My sons have had the same kindergarten teacher. My son's had the same teacher for second and third grade now. It's been awesome. I really hope that we keep Roosevelt open. Two years ago, I know it was kind of a tough decision in deciding whether or not it should be renovated or rebuilt. It's hard to think about the future and understand where things are going to be. When the school was built, I guarantee they weren't expecting 25 to 30 kids per class. I'm sure they weren't anticipating that a gym would have 300 kids in and at throughout the day. The school is built for a certain size. I don't know what the capacity was when it was built, but I know that having a neighborhood school is a vital part of their education. I heard on NPR that Milwaukee is struggling right now with a number of students who are suffering in education because they have to change from school to school. A part of that is parents not being able to root down in their neighborhood, but we have a neighborhood, and we have a place to send our kids. The neighborhood's only going to expand. In my cul-de-sac, we have about eight houses. We're the only kids in that cul-de-sac, which means that there are seven other houses that are coming upon turning over. On the other cul-de-sac, there are four out of those 10 houses that have kids. There's an apartment complex being built on Jeffers. Up on the other side of Jeffers, there's all sorts of room for development. I hope that you guys will keep that in mind and think more towards the future and expand the schools opposed to busing 300 kids, increasing class sizes in other schools. Keep our school around, keep it bigger. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. That takes us now to our board and administrator reports. Dr. Hardbeck.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the events for the school board in the upcoming weeks. On October 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:30, there will be a budget development meeting that will take place in the administration building. On November 5th, there will be a policy and governance committee meeting, as well as a school board meeting. The policy and governance meeting will take place at 8:45 a.m., and the school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the administration building. November 6th, family advisory council, that will be at 7:00 p.m. You know, I'm looking for the budget, the special session for the budget approval.
October 29th.
So that will be October 29th. There will be a special board meeting for the approval of the budget, and there will also be a public hearing, and that will begin at 5:30. And it will be in this room. On November 6th, a family advisory council, 7:00 p.m. at the administration building. November 8th, demographic trends, facilities, and planning committee will be at 4:00 p.m. November 13th, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m., the budget development committee will meet again, and that will be here in the administration building. And that is the end of my report for tonight. We want to have a short report because we have a number of lengthy things on our agenda.
Absolutely. I really don't have much of a report either. I would just encourage people to visit my blog on the school district website under the school board tab, which is where I put most of the information that I would otherwise share at meetings like this. So that takes us now to the student representatives' report.
All right, so last... Last Thursday, we had our bi-monthly ACP meeting, school-wide, with our newly instated homerooms, and this week's topic was financial literacy. And so with it brought a conversation that I had with Trevor Collop about improving financial awareness scholarships especially, and then on top of that, thinking about further scholarships and national merit, and the importance of the PSAT in qualifying for that to those students who'd be interested.
Yeah, I had similar conversations as well with my school principal, Mr. Bushman, just about kind of opening up the options for students below, as far as opening up the SAT tests for more students, making that a little bit more widely known, and maybe finding more scholarships to list on the website for kids to know about. So just a good week.
Thank you very much. That takes us now to our school board committee reports. Is there a report from budget development?
We'll be talking about budget development.
Right. Leep?
Yes. We met last week, and we are continuing to work on our policy, and we hope to have something to bring to policy and governance shortly for review. Once we have our policy in place, then we're going to circle back and work on some of our procedures so that we have a sort of a firm plan in place for supporting teacher-led initiatives that come before our board. So we're just continuing our work.
Great, thank you. And policy and governance committee?
We have three proposals tonight on the agenda.
Thank you. And we do not have a legislative update, so that'll take us right to the consent agenda for this evening. If you would like to pull an item, please let me know. So I would entertain a motion to approve 7.2, the minutes of October 8th, 2018, the minutes of closed session, October 8th, 2018, the human resources and employment report, payment of all bills in the amount of $7,447,132 and 2 cents, and net payroll in the amount of $3,733,332 and 42 cents for the period of September 1st, 2018, through September 30th, 2018, gifts in the amount of $22,974 and 63 cents for the period of September 1st, 2018, through September 30th, 2018, and the final approval of school board budget priorities. So I would entertain a motion to approve 7.2 through 7.7.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, and then we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us to our individually considered resolutions. The first is approval of the recommended 2018-19 school year budget, and we have Ms. Johnson coming up for presentation.
you were presented two weeks ago, and as Dr. Hardbeck said earlier, we'll have our formal budget adoption next Monday night, and the timing is that there's state statute that says we need to have an adopted budget by November 1st, and since everything was just certified to us last Monday, October 15th, we need a little bit of time to kind of get it all pulled together and have it prepared for you. So a lot of the information that's here, you saw two weeks ago, but there are some things that we wanted to just remind you when we are looking at adopting this recommended budget that's been presented. We continue to talk about how do we spend a dollar in the Eau Claire School District, and so 78 cents of each dollar is spent on salary and fringe, 16 cents is spent on contracted services, and one of the things that we maybe haven't talked about as much that I wanted to remind the board is that we contract out our substitutes, and so in most districts, you're going to see 80% or more in that salary and fringe category, and because we contract out our substitutes, that falls under the contracted services and is in that 16 cents. And so as we get a little bit further down, I'll be able to show you a little more detail, but just keep in mind that very common to hear school districts say 80%, and if you wonder why we're not there, that's because we're contracting, so it's falling under that piece of our dollar. Again, we spend about 4 cents on supplies, about a penny on capital and equipment, and a penny on insurance, debt, and other. And then just kind of a reminder as to where we are in the budget process, and so we are putting the final touches on the reconciliations, probably have some conversations at budget development tomorrow, and then next Monday night, we'll adopt the formal 18-19 budget and have things ready to go. When we're making budget decisions, again, these are the four things that we talk about each time. How does it impact our student achievement? How does it impact equity and universal curriculum? How does it impact our organizational efficiency? And how does it impact our fiscal responsibility? When we build our budget, we always start with our membership counts, and that is different from enrollment, and so the membership count, our final 2017 membership count, was 11,289 students. That's how we based our 18-19 budget, was on that student membership count. Our current 2018 enrollment count is 11,319 students, and so for our preliminary, that three-year membership data that's used solely for funding, our count was 11,243, and again, because we are taking the three-year average, and there are students that are prorated based upon the time that they're with us, and so those counts are always different, but that membership count is what is used in calculating our revenue limit. Again, a friendly reminder about the revenue limit. As our equalization aid goes up, our property taxes are going to go down, and if our property taxes go up, then our equalization aid goes down, and that is a direct reflection of the things that feed into that revenue limit piece. When we talk about revenue limit, the biggest pieces of that really are state aid and our property taxes. So you can see in 2018, our actual aid was 52% for state aid and 48% for property tax. And so that's pretty historical in the Eau Claire School District. We do tend to run about 50/50. You can see this year, our preliminary budget shows 53.5% of state aid and 46.5 property taxes, and so again, we're getting a bump in state aid again because our membership is up this year, and so that is having an impact on the tax levy. If we look at historically, our budget review, and this is just something that we can kind of see to see a trend of, what does our budget look like? So if we look at our revenue budget, our 2017 actual revenue budget was 135.4 million. When we look at our 2018 budgeted, we had 135.4, almost identical, and then our actuals ended up at 137.1 million. So the budget-to-actual difference netted us a $1.7 million difference on the revenue side. When we look at our expense budget, our 17 actual expense budget was 136 million. Our budget for last year was 137.8, and our actual was 138.8. That happens because things come up that you don't always are aware of, and things happen throughout the year. Your budget is kind of your target when you're starting through that. So you can see our expenses were $960,000 more than what we had anticipated, and so just when looking at that operating piece, you can see that that variance was $817,000. We had predicted a $2.3 million deficit when we adopted the budget last year, and we landed at 1.6 million, and so we'll talk about that a little bit more in a few slides. But that, you know, we do really watch our budget, and if there's a potential savings to be had, we do try to make that up throughout the year, and so that's why you see the difference from what we thought our expected budget deficit was going to be and what our actual deficit was at the end of the year. If we move into what does our preliminary operating budget look like for this year? That 137.1, that was our actual revenues for 2018. Our preliminary budget is 139.2. It's a difference of just over $2 million on our total revenues. We look at our expenses, our actual expenses were 138.8. Our current preliminary budget's 142.5. That's a $3.7 million increase. When you look at the percentages, it's a 2.7% increase, and so when you talk about that, it seems like a lot of dollars, but the percentage, because our budget is so large, is not overwhelming. It's just when we get to those dollars, it is big. So our actual deficit last year, again, was that 1.6 million. Our current projected deficit is 3.3 million, and that's a difference of 1.7, and I'm going to walk you through how does that equate, and where does it come through in the categories as well. The other thing I wanted to remind you about is that if we would not have passed a referendum, these numbers would be much worse, and so that referendum has helped us significantly, and I think we all remember that the board had a decision to make of what was the dollar amount to try to have a successful referendum, and that was a tough decision for the board at that time because they knew that it wouldn't completely get us out of the deficit, and so I just am very thankful that our community supports us and did that, or we'd be looking at a lot different numbers nowadays. So if we break down our revenue funds, you remember I said that our revenue is increasing by $2 million overall, and so when you look at by level and what those types are, you can see our property tax levy is projected to go down about 1.4 million, and then you can see that big increase in our state aid, 4.6 million. You know, 2 million of that approximately is coming directly from that state aid number. The other 2 million is really coming from that additional per pupil amount that we're getting. In 1819, you remember the biennial budget has $654 per pupil. That's outside of the revenue limit, and it's categorical aid, and so those are really the two pieces that are bringing that 4.6 million up. So overall, we're projecting a 1.5% revenue increase in our preliminary budget. If we look just at that revenue limit piece, which is just the property tax and our equalized aid, you can see the change between those two is about $910,000, and really, that just comes into our membership count and some other things that, you know, feed into that revenue limit formula. If we move over to the expense side, again, our actual expenses last year were 138.8 million. Our current projection is 142.5 for a difference of 3.7. The thing to remember here is that because 78% of our budget is in salary and fringe, you can see that that difference, that first line, is for almost $4.5 million, and so that makes sense when we talk about our salary and fringe piece being 78% of our budget, and we look at what our increased expenses are, it does mirror kind of what our expectation would be. You know, the big pieces in the salary and fringe area are going to be the salary schedule, it's going to be our FTE, it's going to be health insurance, and OPEB costs are all going to be part of that line. The other thing that's happening this year, and you'll see it throughout the presentation, is that there's been some additional needs identified in the special ed area, and so out of that $4 million increase, about 1.9 of that increase in salary and benefits is related to needs that we needed to pay to meet IEP requirements from the state as well. In contracted services, you see a $354,000 increase. Really, what this entails of is we had a $537,000 increase in our open enrollment costs out, and basically, that's just students that are choosing not to attend the Eau Claire School District, and so we were able to make some changes in other areas to not feel that full half a million dollar expense, not 350,000. Some areas that we were able to reduce is we reviewed our CISA contract and made some changes to that, and we looked at estimates in some of the technology and the buildings and grounds area, again, so we didn't have that full impact of that open enrollment hitting us in the contracted services line. Supplies, obviously, the big increase there is related to the iPads that were approved by the board. Again, similar situation, the iPads were 735,000, but our net increase is 542, so we made reductions in other areas to be able to offset that need that we needed to make with the iPads. Capital, we made some reductions in equipment. You know, we've been talking about that quite a bit in reviewing the five-year capital plan, and so those are going to be the items that cost the district over $5,000 individually. Our insurance, that decrease is really due to our workers' comp premium reduction. We talk about that, and we've been very excited about that because we've been working really hard on that area, getting those modifications down and getting people back to work, and that has a direct impact on our budget. And then finally, the debt and other, it's really just going to be student entry fee fluctuations, the interest rate on our cash flow borrowing that we do is going to be what's impacting that $50,000 increase. Wanted to talk a little bit more about purchase services and really just going back to those substitute costs that are contained within that category. And so the total purchase services, again, last year, our actuals 23.1 million, our budget this year's 23.5 for that difference of 354,000. When we look at our contracted subs, just for our general operation fund, we have projected a decrease of $170,000 in that area. When we talk about special education, again, we had some more needs, student needs that were identified, and so you can see that that contracted piece, we're expecting to spend about $79,456 more than what we had spent previously, and I just wanted to be able to share that with the board as well because it kind of gets lost in that contracted service piece, and that is a real cost, and in order for us to meet the IEP needs, you know, we've had to add staff in that area specifically, and so, you know, we had about $1.9 million in salary and fringe, and then we've got about $79,000 in contracted services related specifically to special ed. The other thing that I didn't highlight and pull out, but the other thing that falls under contracted services, is the vouchers. And so when we get to the final adopted budget, you'll see that impact on our contracted services as well, and I'll make sure and point that out to the board when we're looking at that detail next week.
Can I make a comment about the special education voucher and the vouchers?
Sure.
Because presently, we're funded at about 26% for special education, whereas the special education scholarship or the voucher piece for private schools is funded at almost 90. So I just want to make that people aware of that.
So the next important thing that we kind of talked about at the last board meeting, and I wanted to just put a little history to it, is the operating fund balance, and this is something that we've been talking about a lot as a board and also with budget development because we've been concerned about how does that deficit impact our fund balance. And so you can kind of see, just for viewing purposes, you know, 2013, 14, 2014, 15, 16, 17, been teetering around, you know, the range in our percent compared to our operating expenses. It's been 21.1 to 25.6%. We knew that after this year, we'd be really teetering on that 20%, and so you can see that at the end of 1718, that has gone to 19.5%, and with the current proposed deficit, that's going to bring us down to 16.5%. And so, you know, we talk about it a lot, and I wanted to be able to share that with the board. The hard part is that, you know, the projected $3.3 million deficit, when we break it out by category, we have $4.5 million in that salary and fringe line, and while I know it's difficult to talk about it, there's really two things that we can do to improve the deficit, and one is to work on revenue, and that revenue committee has been established, that realistically will take us a little bit of time to get that going and be able to see some dollars. But if there's an area to make immediate impact to the budget, unfortunately, that's going to be in the salary and fringe categories, and so we'd have to really focus on, if we want to make a change and impact that bottom line, we would really need to focus on that salary and fringe. We've done a lot in the contracted services and in the supplies and all the other categories, but it doesn't add up because that salary and fringe piece is such a large part of our budget, and I understand that it's unpopular to talk about, and it gets everybody's concerns up, but I think we just need to have that at our forefront level because in order to solve, you know, have that be one piece of the puzzle, that's an area that we'd have to look at and continue to look at. And I just, out of that $4.5 million increase, again, we can attribute almost 3.8 million just in the regular salary lines, and that's just the regular salary schedule, which includes the CPI increase, the level movement, and any additional FTE that are needed. And then when we look at our health insurance, you know, that's another big piece of that increase, and then OPEB is having an impact on that, and so when we look at that total salary and fringe increase, to be able to attribute 3.8 million of that, again, that just is reiterating that fact that these are real things and have a big impact to our budget, and we need to be able to kind of keep them on the forefront. And there's certain things, you know, in the special ed area, we need to be able to meet the minutes that are required in the IEP, and so some things are beyond our control, but we just need to be very aware of that as we're carefully working through the budget. Here's our preliminary estimate on how we're going to spend our referendum funds this year, and so you can see for our regular salary and fringes, we're estimating about 2.8 million of that will be in that area. We have identified 2.4 FTE for class size reduction this year, which is about $223,000. Our technology and safety and security is estimated to be $637,000, and our debt payment on that debt that we issued for the deferred maintenance is just over 2.1, and so that's the breakdown of our 5.86 million spent in the 18-19 budget. So if we take a look at our dollar and 2 cents and break it up a little bit more, you know, again, the 78 cents in salary and fringe doesn't change, but we did detail out a little bit more our contracted services, and so 14.5 cents is what, you know, we're kind of spending on ECSD pieces. That 1% is the contracted subs that we talked about earlier, and again, if you add that over to salary and fringe, again, you're getting closer to that 80%. And then we spend about half a cent of our contracted services on services that we're providing to the private schools in the form of transportation, idea, title, you know, those things that we're required to do from a state standpoint. 4 cents is sent on supplies, again, a penny on capital and equipment, and a penny on insurance and debt and other. So with that, I'll ask if you have any additional questions for me tonight?
Commissioner Hamburg-Boyle?
Yeah, I guess I just have to say this. It's as we sit here and look at our budget, and we only, you know, say that 78% we spend on our staff, the best and the brightest that we need to make the biggest difference for our kids and families in our community, and look at where funding has come over the last 25 years. I just want to ask Abby that if we didn't have the money going out for contracted services relative to the voucher piece, even though we go out to taxpayers without them really, I mean, it's not on their property taxes that they know that they are being charged for that now, and the fact that we don't have two-thirds funding, if we did have the two-thirds funding, which they are now talking about relative to the upcoming election, and if we were at the state average per pupil and looking at that piece of it, and if we were funded, the special education funding has been flat for 10 years, would we be having this conversation?
I think it would look different. The vouchers definitely have an impact in our recommended budget. It was $664,000. You know, we'll see the final number when we present the budget next week, but again, that because we're levying that back, it's really, you know, included in the revenue and expense side. The two-thirds funding, I think, would make a difference because you can see right now, our state aid piece is just over 53%, and so I don't know exactly what that would look like, but that would have to have an impact on us. And then the state average per pupil, I know that we're below the state average, I just don't know the number off the top of my head, but that definitely would have an impact as well when you're talking 11,243 students, I think, was our number. So it all... So, it all adds up when you start putting it together, for sure.
Yeah, I, I even tried to put the numbers together for a higher level of special ed funding. The one budget is saying 30% the first year, then up to 60 the second year. That would make a huge difference as well.
Yeah, I think when we did the calculations, it was, it was a couple million dollars for sure, for us.
I just needed to make that point, so everybody knows that. I have signs too, I will hand out outside after the meeting that say, I love my public schools, and I vote, I don't care who you vote for, but I will be out there handing out signs, so come and get one.
Are there any, are there any questions about the budget? I, I have a question about the district looking at a line of credit. Is that something that we have pursued, or you're pursuing, or something that the Budget Development Committee is looking at?
Yeah, I think it's an option that we've talked about over the last couple of years, and I would say we're actively exploring it, probably more than we have in the past. So, hopefully, I'll have some information to share soon.
Are there any other questions regarding this? Oh, yes, Commissioner Harder.
More of a comment than a question, just want to call out that, Abby, if you can go back a couple slides to the, the fund balance, this one is the one that kind of gives me nightmares as Chair of the Budget Development Committee. It's a very bad trend, from my perspective. I guess I don't have to explain that, especially if you look at those percentages down along the bottom, and that impacts our ability to, to borrow and our credit rating. And more importantly than that, we're simply eating into our funds at an alarming rate that just is not sustainable. And so, we as a board, I think, over this year are going to have some hard decisions to make about what we might do to, to change that picture. I think, as you said, the, the revenue, you know, the, the work that we're doing to, to try to find new sources of revenue is, is just a great idea, as far as I'm concerned. I think realistically, it will likely take some time to develop and how much of a dent it can put in this ultimately, even in a best-case scenario, I think we need to be thinking about as we spend time and, and work on that. And then, put that into perspective about what else we need to do in terms of, of shifting. So, that's just, I guess, my view from the, from the chair seat on the Budget Committee.
Commissioner Hambuck-Boyle?
I'm sorry, and then I'll be done. I think, too, as a board, and I've thought about this a lot, is that we have a lot of things in the fire right now, too, relative to revenue, because you could look at our enrollment out and why that's happening, and why we need to do some things to maybe get more enrollment in. Again, in the blue ribbon hearings that were across the state, there were districts that would get up and testify and talk about how they felt so uncomfortable stealing kids back and forth from districts just to make ends meet. You know, so, you know, as we get into revenue, I think we have to, there's a balance there too, you know, as far as what that looks like. But, you know, we've talked about LRNC, the Little Red Nature Campus, we've got the Spanish Immersion sitting out there, we've got some things that have to do with things that pass down the road once the policy and things are coming about that. You know, you have to spend money to make money, and that's a whole different place for public schools, in the sense that we were used to being funded 25 years ago to a level that allowed us to do what we needed to do. And so, I just, I just want people to put this whole budget piece in a great big picture of all these things that impact and how we're pulling it apart, and how they all have to be connected, and they all have to make sense. And I have to say, when we talk about the fund balance, I'm glad that's the picture up here, because I want to end with the fact that I've asked repeatedly, the people that make the decisions about our budget and how we are funded, repeatedly, everyone, I mean, anyone who I can talk to, it doesn't matter, you know, what party they're part of, and I said, what if the eighth largest district had to cut into their fund balance over and over again? Is there, do you know what would happen if we couldn't do that anymore? And there wasn't one person that I approached in the last three or four years that could give me an answer. So, I, I really think that we have to, we have to, people that are making those decisions, hold them accountable for that, you know, whoever you, you know, whatever your stripe or whatever your, 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 the people you talk to are, and have these deep conversations about your public schools. It, it is, the time is now, and, and we need to do this. So, I'm sorry, but I had to say that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would agree. I think there is a real need for long-term thinking, big-picture thinking about the budget, and I think that when we talk about both pursuing savings, whether it's cutting costs, redesigning things within the district, or pursuing revenue, I think we have to look, look at what can we do in the short term, things that we don't have to wait six to 10 years or whatever to, to see an impact, things that we could institute that would be in effect for the next school year or the school year after that. So, there are, there are systemic things that we can do, we know that we can do, we're not reinventing the wheel with any of them. There are districts across this country that have done that, so I think that'll be our homework as school board members over the next several months, is to be doing that work, engaging in that. So, I don't see any other microphone lights, so the motion that we would need for tonight's meeting to bring it to the, the meeting in one week is just a motion that the board approve the 2018-19 recommended budget as presented. So, if someone wants to make that motion. So moved. Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote on this, because it's financial.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lugenville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuck-Boyle?
With a heavy heart, yes.
And Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us to our second item under the individually considered resolutions, which is planning for listening sessions regarding the recommendation made by the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee. And we have Ms. Kohler at the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come back, share a little bit more about the work of the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee, and the work that we're hoping to do as we move forward with listening sessions. Last week, the committee chair, Phil Lyons, and I shared with you the recommendation of the committee. This recommendation is aligned to the district-wide, the district strategic plan, both with a focus on academic achievement, student social, emotional growth, and partnering with our families and community. And before I share more information, I just want to briefly summarize the information that the committee shared with you at the last meeting, so that we can all be up to speed. We reviewed the charge of the committee that you can see here. We shared with you the 11 principles that the committee uses to guide their work, including the four that are highlighted in blue font, as we work to address the needs of the district at the 4K and elementary levels. We provided an overview of the work of the committee between 2016 and present. We shared enrollment and capacity data that showed some of our elementary schools are operating at around 50% capacity, and others are nearing 95% capacity. And we explained that the elementary schools in the northern part of the district have roughly 800 empty seats combined, and elementary schools in the southern part of the district have roughly 200 seats combined available. At the last meeting, we also summarized these three trends when we start to look at things from a district-wide perspective. First, we need to keep our attention on the increased demand for early childhood education, and we believe that the demand for centralized early childhood education will continue to grow, and with that comes a space need. Second, the number of northside elementary schools that are currently under the 65% capacity that are identified in our, there are a number of schools that are under that capacity that are identified in our principles, and there is an opportunity to increase the capacity or the number of students in those schools. And there's opportunities for subdivisions all over the city, but with new developments on the south side of the city, we wouldn't have any room in our schools to accommodate students that might want to come here. And so, with that, and based on those trends, the committee shared at the last board meeting really two potential solutions, and you can see them outlined here, I made the font a little bit bigger, so you can read it this week. The first was to develop a plan to repurpose Roosevelt into a 4K center, and that would include a facility upgrade. Within that plan, we'd also reestablish elementary boundaries, absorbing Roosevelt students into other northside schools, so that it could become a 4K center. And we would develop a facility plan to address the capacity issues at the southside elementary schools. That's option one. Option two was to develop a plan to address capacity issues at the northside schools, but also maintain Roosevelt as an elementary site. That would include reestablishing boundaries to balance enrollments, and would include a facility plan for Roosevelt as an elementary school. The plan would also call for a separate 4K facility site plan, and, and the plan to relieve some of the capacity issues on the southside school. When we costed that out, you can see here the difference between the two plans is quite large, and that was pointed out at the last meeting. So, option one would, at this point, we believe, run between 17.5 to 21 million, option two between 46 and 51.9 million. So, based on the study of the district needs and the cost options outlined, the Demographics and Trends Committee recommended that the district repurpose Roosevelt to a 4K site, absorb Roosevelt students into the surrounding northside schools with available seats, and address capacity issues on the south side of the city through new construction. And so, here we are in between meetings, really looking for direction from you, as far as what, what you want our next steps to look at. So, we understand that the board and families and other stakeholders will have questions, and they're going to want information, and we know that you're going to want to gather information before you make a decision regarding the recommendation. And so, what we're really seeking is, what would you like to see in the listening sessions? So, our, our wondering really is, should we prepare to share information at the listening session only about option one, which is the recommended option, the repurposing of Roosevelt and the southside expansion? Or should we prepare to share information about both options, addressing Roosevelt as a 4K site or keeping it open, and looking at a different 4K site, and with both options, southside expansion? We also wonder if we should be prepared to share proposed new boundaries within whichever options we're asked to share information about. Would, would you like to see those proposed boundary changes shared at the listening sessions, or would you prefer to wait until a decision is made, and you've decided which option is moving forward, and then have the committee look at boundary changes within the option that you choose? The third thing is, when we're considering boundaries, how would middle schools be affected? We can maintain the current middle school geographical boundaries, or we could look at, we could maintain the current middle school feeder system. So, as an example, if we look at a school, maybe a neighborhood in Roosevelt that might go to Sam Davie, Sam Davie currently feeds North Star, but geographically, that neighborhood right now would be in the long attendance area. So, would you, how would you like us to address middle school? And then, the other, the last thing that we're really wondering about is the architectural study. Would you like us to commission an architectural study on the facility needs in whichever options we share? Or would you like to choose your option based on the estimates that we have right now, and then commission a study once a decision is made? And so, with that, I will leave it up for questions and comments.
Thank you. I guess I'll, I'll just go first with my initial thoughts in seeing this and what we should include or not include. I would support presenting regarding options one and two, just in that basic way. I would wait on the, the proposed or boundary piece. I would wait on even bringing that into it, and I would also wait on the architectural study. So, the two things that I would include, though, would be of this slide, and I have others, though, but the two of this slide that I would suggest would be the, the options one and two, providing the information and education about those, and then discussion of that option of maintaining boundaries versus maintaining feeder schools. The reason why leave some in, take some out, is because I think that, the reason for keeping both options, I think, is in keeping with the way we've done listening sessions in the past regarding things that the board may consider, as we usually show a couple options, like the OPEB listening sessions, for example. But then, with, the reason for leaving some out, my thinking with that is, this was going to be a lot of information already, and a lot that we're going to be asking of our attendees. The discussion of the boundaries themselves could be an entirely separate thing, so I think that separating it out in that way would probably be most prudent. But I'd open it up to any other ideas, Commissioner Harder, and then Klinkhammer.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Presenting both options seems really important to me, especially, I just go to that cost slide, and I think putting those both up against each other, and some, there may be somebody in the community or, or who has another view on how these numbers could be viewed, and maybe make a better picture for option two, possibly, but in, in the absence of that, these numbers are really important, and if only for that reason, to be able to present both options. But I, I agree with President Lugenville's point about, you know, just let's put both options out there for discussion, to have a, I think, just a more robust listening session in general.
I, I agree that both options should be presented, but I wonder about, you know, presenting both of those options will engender questions about the boundaries. So, if we have audience questions that are directed to the presenters about the boundaries, and they say, oh, no, we're not going to talk about that right now, I think that creates more bad feeling than it solves trying to divide out the information separately. So, I think the presenters have to be prepared to be talking about those boundary issues, because they're going to be a piece of the solution of this. And so, to not talk about them and have them just presented later as sort of an after effect, when, for some people, that may make part of their decision, or part of their questioning, or part of their perception of all of this, I, I think you either, you, you have to be talking about that when you present these different options. For the architectural study, I, I'm a little not sure about what that involves, so could you flesh that out a little bit, Kim?
I can. So, when we look for an architectural study, it's a little bit more in-depth, looking at, so here's an, a concrete example. Right now, the middle school, or the southside schools are estimated between eight and nine million dollars for an addition. If we had an architectural study, we could look, it would involve folks going to the possible schools, and kind of looking at the bones of the school to see if there's, there are things that we might miss, or things that we would make sure that we would want to include, and which of, you know, we have several options on the south side, which makes the most sense, not only as far as money is concerned, but also as far as acreage is concerned, and space for a parking lot, space for children to play, space for it to be a community center. And another question would be, we, we ran into this when an architectural study was completed for Roosevelt, really, an addition was virtually the same cost as a new school. So, would we be wise to add on to two existing schools, or would it be more feasible financially? Or would it be more feasible financially to start fresh with a different school? So we can't really know that until we do a more complete architectural study. Right now, we can estimate, but it's just not as complete.
Commissioner Torres.
I have two comments to that proposal. I think that it is important to offer as many options as possible. Perhaps in the listening sessions, we can see if there is something in the middle. I would hate for these sessions to become a discussion between Northside and Southside interests or aspirations, sort of competition. I certainly would not want to create any additional inequities than there already exists. So we need to be very careful in that. And the second one, I know we have time, but I would insist that we make an official contact with the city and make sure that we have written reports on what the growth, what's the planning about the growth for the city. I think that we should have a say because whenever there is a development in the south or in the north side or the east or west side of our school district, a selling point of each unit is the quality of the schools. And a growth without us on the table only creates stresses within our system. And we need to have a say in that process.
The committee met, I believe it was last Thursday, and we discussed that as well. We are planning to approach the city, the county, and the townships to ask to be part of their workflow when they're looking at approving developments so that we would know how big those developments would be, how many houses, the price range of those developments, you know, kind of the demographics of the families that they're trying to attract. Are they, you know, kind of starter homes for young families that might have preschool-age children? Are they families, homes where they would see a family growing in them? Are they, is it a retirement community? So we're hoping to connect with them and have them start to initiate that communication with us as well, kind of on the front end of things.
Commissioner Hambuch, well.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner President Luganville. I have a thing to share and then a question. So I'll start with my question. In demo trends, as we look forward to possibly having a Spanish immersion piece in our district, and there's been two buildings that have kind of been involved in that, it would be Locust Lane and Longfellow, which are two buildings that have lower seatage, is that the right word? Capacity. And I know that they talked about that. Is that part, I mean, is that part of what the information we received and that's been taken into account? If, I know it's not a given yet, and I understand that, but again, I have to kind of think about if it is, did we think about that?
So that is one of the questions that the committee has is, where is that program and how will it impact? It relates somewhat to the boundaries as far as proposed boundaries because if that program moves forward and where it lands could impact potential boundary changes. However, if we look at that program running K through five, probably it would be about a hundred and eighty students, and we know on the northern side of the district, we have eight hundred seats available. So we believe we could, we could problem solve around it, but it could impact number two up there as far as what are the proposed changes for boundaries.
And that would be the same with LRNs. LRNs, yep. So my last comment I wanted to make was, I just had a conversation with the city council person, and it was a conversation about that north-south side thing. And now maybe it's a, it's time for the school district and the county and the city to really work together to talk about us being one community. And, you know, when you talk about a neighborhood school and you talk about our budget, I really do feel that there is a difference in being able to ride your bike or to walk to your neighborhood school. That is a loss and a terrible loss. But putting it within the big picture and the decisions we're making with budgets, I hope people realize that we really have to look at all the options. And I hope that over time, we teach that to our children in the sense that things aren't, you know, a given. And as much as we want them to be, we have to be responsible board with a responsible budget within the times that we are given. So, thanks.
Commissioner Beekah.
If we're planning for multiple sessions, I'm wondering if people might be open to the idea of having each one a slightly different design. And I think that what I, what I can relate to most here is the listening sessions for the high school boundary change. And I remember the things that parents asked about. And I see too much, I think all of this is important. I think it's too much to include in one session. And I also see things that are missing. So maybe parents from the north and memorial parents, people wanted to talk about what impact will this have on my child academically? What will be the impact on their socio-emotional development? And I think there may be some even basics here. There is a pretty robust literature on neighborhood schools. What do we know from that literature that we could share with parents? Or thinking about, I know in the presentation at the last meeting, I learned for the first time, if I, I might think that students have greater access at Roosevelt because it's smaller, but we learned that there's actually less access with regard to certain staff positions. And these are very basic things, I think, that are the starting place, at least for me. And if the sessions could be recorded and then any parents who couldn't attend could watch and they would have a building, kind of a building quality to them. So I would toss that out.
Yeah. Oh, I think that's all very helpful. So I just want to make sure I'm tracking what everyone has kind of talked about so far. I'm hearing pretty much across the board, everyone is good with doing both options for the purposes of listening sessions. I'm also hearing pretty much that there's the interest in including all of these categories, including a presentation regarding maintaining current middle school boundaries or maintaining current middle school feeder schools, doing both, including a discussion of proposed new boundary outlines for both options and including the architectural study, facility needs for both options. So basically, including all of it with both options being included in the information. So is my, oh, yep, go ahead.
One other thing, would it be possible to ask the family advisory committee for the school about what I, because, you know, we could guess what the parents might need, but what are we forgetting? And that could help shape the sessions.
Right. Yeah, I think if we could come out of tonight with at least a draft and then take it to them, I think that would be helpful. I guess, and I think if we just, if we just lay out the priorities that we want covered in the listening sessions, we could probably leave it to our administrators and demo trends to figure out if maybe it is going to be more feasible to split them up in categories like what you're suggesting, which I think is a good idea. I'm thinking, too, yes, recording them. Also, two other considerations. One, doing what we did with the OPEB email address, having a Roosevelt@ecsd.us email address where people can send ideas or something like that. That could be a possibility for people who cannot attend in person. And the other is, I think, making sure that childcare is available onsite. We didn't necessarily have that with the boundary, high school boundary, listening sessions with all of those. I think primarily because of the age of majority of the students that were there, many of them were sitting in the session. But I think that for this demographic of families that are going to be interested, I think having childcare available onsite for every session will be important, too. Are there any other, I guess, these, of the four that I listed, kind of from this slide, from what I'm hearing, is that accurate from what folks were saying? Any additions to that? At least a starting point, and then we can take it to the family advisory council. I guess one piece that I think is important is how this serves as really an educational session first and foremost, because I think there's a real need for that on this from so many different angles. But I think that, you know, some of the other pieces of it, just points for communication throughout the session, you know, talking about, and I wrote some of these down over the weekend, just thinking through what would be helpful for us as a board to have as information to get back, and what would be helpful for the parents in the audience. I think talking about what are the current problems and what are the consequences of the current challenges when it comes to student equity. And I think, I mean, because that's really been such a laser focus of our board, is student equity. And so many of the very difficult decisions that our board has made and will continue to make have been about student equity. So I think that's an important theme. One of the, one of the pieces, I think, too, is talking about related issues of concern that impact this decision. You know, and that kind of gets to, I think, what Commissioner Beek is talking about, parents asking in those sessions, how will this impact my child's X, Y, Z? And I think, you know, that gets down to talking about how will we be meeting the needs of students? What will that look like with feeder schools? What will that look like with transportation, with those logistics that families are going to have to work with regardless of whatever decision we make? I think the other piece I would, I would say is, when we talk about resources for these solutions, financial resources, what financial resources are needed? How would we get those financial resources logistically? And in terms of people resources, what local stakeholders or groups are, in terms of resources, do we need to contribute to this? And then I think the other piece, which I would, I would imagine parents would be most interested in, but also I think would help us refine these sessions, is not, is not just having a blanket, as much as possible, a blanket, we want to hear whatever you've got, kind of thing. Because frankly, what isn't going to be helpful for our board is just hearing from person after person about the, how special Roosevelt is to them. We know that and we've established that. And I, so I think that I want to elevate the role of the people who are attending, the parents who are attending, and specifically ask them, what are alternatives you think of? What are practical alternatives you have thought of for addressing the challenges faced? And then asking them, too, are there additional considerations the board and administration should be aware of as we look at solutions? I think just really phrasing it in those ways, though, because I want to make sure that we get out of it getting what we need in terms of feedback, but that also those parents get out of it really as valued stakeholders who've been able to give us feedback that is tangible and useful. So, yeah, that's, and I'll send that list, just those thoughts. But, yeah, Commissioner Harter.
I'd just like to, I'd like to echo that. I think that's really, a really important concept because there's a lot of very understandable and very well justified emotion about this school. And we understand that. It's not that we don't want to hear that, but it's really vital that we move and elevate it, as President Luganville mentioned, elevate the conversation to real problem solving, looking at alternatives and pros and cons of those alternatives, and making sure that all the alternatives are on the table, so.
Commissioner Hambuch.
And I just wondered, too, if there's a place for people to connect with the district if they have questions or whatever. It might be a viable place to also put information on neighborhood schools and some of the studies that are out about diversity, upward mobility, and the mixes of, you know, that's good information if people want, want to see it. Certainly, I learned a lot when I went out reading some of these things and getting into some of those studies when I, between our last meeting and now. So maybe we can post some of those and some of what that information is for families to have.
Okay. So I guess for you, Ms. Kohler, do you feel like you at least have a clear idea of what scope we're looking at here?
I think I do. Options one and two, definitely.
Right.
Proposed boundaries for each.
Right.
Option. And then we could come down with options for middle school as far as what that would or could look like, and then ask for a complete architectural study for both the repurposing of Roosevelt as 4K. And I guess it'd be for three things than if we're doing both options. Repurpose of Roosevelt for 4K or an additional 4K site and the Southside expansion. So architectural studies in those three areas.
Yeah. I almost said commissioner, but it's Lieutenant Harter.
I just, I just wanted to ask a question of the board. We have estimates on the architectural study facility needs in the shared options. So those are already available to us and have been costed. If we go to a complete architectural study, prior to that, another one, there's going to be an additional cost to that. So is that something that the board wants us to engage in before the listening sessions begin?
Are you saying that we have architectural studies completed for all of the options?
Kim, could you go back to the slide that lists the costs of it?
So what we do, so what we do have is the estimates that came from the Roosevelt piece. What we don't have is the, a facility plan regarding 4K, right? Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the difference, too, between the structural and capacity needs at Roosevelt on the right-hand side, that was an architectural study. And the address capacity, capacity issues on Southside Elementary Schools is an estimate, an in-house estimate, and as are the 4K in-house estimates.
So my question is, is this the information that you want shared in the listening sessions? Or are you asking for additional cost outs?
I guess I'd open that up to the board. That was, that was one that I personally felt we probably didn't need for the listening sessions, but I will defer to what the rest feel on that.
I just want to make sure, so the, these estimates are, do we feel there's some uncertainty about these numbers or there are alternatives to this that are not costed out?
There's, there are probably pros and cons with each. If we do a complete architectural study in 2019, the numbers will be very accurate for 2019. If we begin building in 2022 or even 2021, there will be differences in the actual cost. So the nice thing about a firm architectural study is it gives you very current, very accurate information. The con is that that accurate information is dependent on market prices at the time of the architectural study.
So the intention of another architectural study would be to refine numbers with the caveat that they're, they have a freshness date on them that's limited.
Yep. I would say estimates are the same way. You know, things in a couple of years could impact the estimates. Generally speaking, that tends to go up, not down.
Right. To what extent would the Buildings and Grounds Department have the ability to help us update estimates if we were to ask for that without having to go to an external source?
They could do that.
They could do?
Yes, they could.
So I mean, I think that for the purposes of, if we're just, I mean, we're going to be going off of estimation anyways. This wouldn't be an immediate thing either way. So I think if we could go that route, that would be at least a happy medium. at least a happy medium. And I think, and I think that for the purposes of public consumption and for the purposes of planning and having an estimate, I think that would meet the, meet the goal. Okay. I guess the, the other piece that, um, so I, I think you laid it out pretty well, the, as far as what, what we've said. I think the other, that, and that kind of all is, is about the, the presentation itself. So then I think as far as making sure that we include for the, the part for public input, those, those questions. You know, what are practical alternatives for addressing these challenges? If any, um, and also are there additional considerations or additional information that the board needs to be aware of, district needs to be aware of? You know, having those really laid out as, that is, that's what we want getting, to come out of those sessions as far as the public input. But I, um, am I missing anything so far? I know that, then what we'll do is we can take this, draft it up and send it to the, the Family Advisory Council. That would be maybe a good, that was your suggestion, I think, Commissioner Beek. Are there, um, to descend, to, to, to help, uh, help us flesh out exactly what we want to include? Was that where, what you brought them up for?
I, I guess I hadn't thought to send a draft to them, but more of to ask them if there were topics that they wanted to make sure would be included.
Okay, yeah. So, um, when are, when is their next meeting?
Their next meeting is the first Tuesday in November.
Okay, so if, um, we, did you want to have listening sessions? I wouldn't think next month. Were, was that, was that the thought? Was it next month? Fall, winter, okay, so. All right, um, is it possible to solicit that electronically? From the, I would think, put out some sort of a little form?
I mean, we could certainly survey the, uh, the Family Advisory Council about that. In our last meeting, we did have representatives from Roosevelt who spoke of their concerns and there was quite a bit of, of conversation that took place. Might be helpful for them to have that conversation in view of the listening sessions and the information that they might like to see and.
You're saying in-person have that conversation? Okay, so then we might have to wait a little bit on when we're going to do these listening sessions. So we would have, have it brought to the family, have a draft of something from here, brought to the Family Advisory Council, the first Tuesday in November, brought to us, then the third Monday in November at our board meeting, which we could then approve as an individual item. And one, and the other, the other consideration could be in, in your discussions with them. Is this too much to include in one session? Could we pare it down? But then we could have it as a, as a document to approve. Does that sound okay with everybody? Okay. Are there more questions on that? Okay, so I know this is an individual item and we could vote on something tonight, but I think we'll wait, we'll send it out to the, to that group, we'll have it in their meeting and we'll, um, maybe it could be put in the Friday letter then, the, the Friday after. Like the first Friday in November, it could be put in the Friday letter and then board members could have the opportunity to send feedback regarding it for the next couple of weeks and then we could hopefully have a really good draft of, of a plan for the second and, the second meeting in November, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, so now we will adjourn from our individually considered resolutions and go to our committee reports. And our first item is the Opening of Schools and Equity Report.
Excellent, I'm back. So. Kay, Jim and I will be talking to you today about the Opening of Schools Report. As the eighth largest district in the state of Wisconsin, we are ever-changing, responding to the needs of our students and community. The Eau Claire Area School District currently serves 11,319 students and employs, employs over 1,400 adults. We welcomed 853 4K students this year and nearly as many are preparing to graduate this spring. We are teachers, custodians, physical therapists, cooks, principals, secretaries, school board members, crossing guards. We are scholars, athletes, musicians, artists, scientists, community volunteers and more. We are the Eau Claire Area School District and this is our story. The ECASD is committed to inspiring and preparing each of our 11,319 students to live creative, fulfilling and responsible lives. 11,319 students each bringing their unique story, um, to the classroom. Tonight's presentation will share with you who those students are and how the district works to meet each one of their unique needs. Inspiring and preparing all students to live creative, fulfilling and responsible lives means that we've had to change the way we think about student achievement and social emotional growth. In the past, schools often looked at students falling, as falling into a bell curve. We anticipated the vast majority of our students would perform in a typical or average way, but counted on others to perform either above or below average. Now, we work to place each student on a growth curve. In a J curve mindset, we're committed to putting interventions and enrichment in place so that more and more students will meet the standards in academic achievement and social emotional growth. One of the biggest challenges, challenges in that is, you can see is there's usually a bit of a, an implementation dip as you reorganize and implement a new system and strategies. It takes time and patience and persistence to make system-wide changes that ultimately affect and improve the performance for all students. As we increase expectations and support all students to meet them, one of our greatest challenges is to do this with dwindling resources. In an open enrollment environment, we find ourselves tracking who leaves, who stays and who joins us throughout the year. We find ourselves having to prove each day that we're a high-performing school district. That not only promotes academic achievement, but also focuses on social emotional development, which requires a student-centered, whole-child focus with a wide range of course offerings, co-curricular programs, athletics, clubs, activities, all of which bring added value and added cost to the district in a time when we're still operating under revenue caps and a funding formula. Vouchers, required support for private and parochial schools that have, have not kept pace with our development as a district. We face our charge and our challenge with gusto. As we start the 2018-19 school year, we're welcoming more than 11,000 students that you can see here are dispersed throughout the district. You'll notice that some of these bars stand out from the others. You'll notice that 4K is quite a bit larger than many of our other classes. The Eau Claire Area School District attracts many open enrolled students in our 4K community sites, which accounts for that large number. This year, we also have 883 students with senior status. While the majority of those students are traditional seniors, this number also captures our commitment to continue to serve students in years five and six so that they earn their diploma. Our fifth and sixth grade classes may stand out a little bit as well. They're simply just large classes. Our student population is growing faster than projected, as you can see here. Our confirmed enrollments have consistently been higher than the projections from Applied Populations Lab and reflect the steady changes and growth in the greater Eau Claire area. It's good news for our district. Over the past five years, our schools reflect the demographic changes in our community as a whole. Our student population has become more diverse. When we look at just some of the many subgroups of students that we serve, as we do on this graph, you can see that since 2014-15, the number of students in the, these demographic groups has increased by seven percent over time. In a district of over 11,000 students, that translates into approximately 700 additional students. The diversity of our district's increasing. We're no longer a one-size-fits-all district. Eau Claire students reflect educational programming that's supported at the state level that allows families' choice and voice in their student's education plan. Of the 11,319 students, three percent or 369 students who live within the Eau Claire, um, district boundaries attend a school outside their neighborhood school. The district works with families of these students to support the legal, medical and social emotional needs of the students through an alternate school request. Just under three percent of students live in another community but come to the Eau Claire School District for school. This year, we served 300, we served 314 students through open enrollment plans with another district. These families choose Eau Claire because of education, because of the educational opportunities we provide, such as specialized programming, advanced placement courses, electives and more. And almost eight percent of our students come from our 4K program, both at Prairie Ridge and through our community sites. We have 595 students who live in our district and could attend the Eau Claire Area School District, but they choose to attend another school, district. You can see here the top four reasons that students might attend another district in our area. Virtual programming is one of them. Many families choose to participate in virtual or online programming with their children at home. 4K childcare. Several Eau Claire Area School District children receive daycare in communities where their families work. And when those children are eligible for 4K programming, they may choose to open enroll in that district to maintain their continuity in childcare. Continued enrollment. Sometimes when families move to the district, they choose to keep their child in the district they were previously enrolled in to avoid a move for their child and to maintain some stability in the school environment while there are changes at home. And there are social emotional reasons too. Occasionally, when a student has struggled in an Eau Claire Area District, Eau Claire Area School District school, parents choose to seek neighboring districts to help give their child a fresh start socially. Um, one other note, you can see here on the open enroll, um, the open enroll out percentage is higher than our open enroll in. So open enroll out here is purple and open enroll in is the green. We've heard from several families this year who declined the opportunity to attend Eau Claire through an open enrollment application because they weren't able to attend their preferred school. So as an example, several high school students applied to the Eau Claire School District and declined a spot, um, when they were placed at North High School, they preferred Memorial. Or some, um, families live south of town and declined a spot at some of the north, um, elementary schools that were open. So we could have had a larger green chunk, um, but those families declined that spot. The enrollment of each of our students also tells a story and that story is linked to the funding that we, we receive for them. For example, you can see on the graph on the right-hand side that when a student who lives in the Eau Claire School, Area School District attends our school full-time, we receive $9,835 in revenue for that child. If an ECASD student attends another district through open enrollment out, we receive that same amount of money and then we pay the other district $7,379 for serving our student in their school. You can see other school districts follow that same practice. For the students that are coming to us from open enroll in, they pay us that same dollar amount. And finally, because our 4K students attend only partial days, we receive a prorated rate for those students. So although we have over 800 of them, um, this year we anticipate receiving about $5,901 for each of those.
Kim, can I ask a question? The enroll, enroll out though, does, that doesn't include the voucher?
Abby, you can probably answer that better than I can.
Yeah, that's a separate line item. The voucher is separate on there.
Thanks, Abby. We do receive aid from other sources, um, that you can see here. The state provides aid for, um, special education, library, people transportation, bilingual, bicultural, um, aid. Uh, and we see, we receive federal dollars through a variety of grants, including IDEA, um, Title and Head Start. We do build our budget and our programming based around the strategic plan that includes the items that you can see here. Uh, for the past several years, the board's priorities have been around partnerships with family and community, academic programming, high-quality staff and class size. We'd like to share with you tonight how those priorities are unfolding in our district. And I am going to start with the priority of partnering with families and communities and how that impacts each day in the district. We know that district families count on us to keep their child safe each day. We take that responsibility seriously. During the summer of 2018, we updated entrances to Lake Shore, Mans, McKinley, Memorial and Montessori to provide security and increase the safety of our students. New fire alarm systems were also installed at Lake Shore and Mans. Our emphasis on safety and our priority of partnering with the community is reflected in the policy, um, 445 as well. We're starting the 2018-19 school year with revised policy 445. That policy outlines our partnership with the Eau Claire Police Department and our renewed effort to ensure not only that we have a coordinated and unified response to crisis situations, but also that we partner together to build meaningful and positive relationships with each of those 11,319 students. Our school resource officers and our neighborhood patrol officers spend time in our schools. And they spend time at school events. They're working to get to know our students and our families and they're strong advocates for safety in our school community. We know that safe schools require a community effort. This graph outlines the many partnerships that we have with community partners to ensure the safety of our students, especially during a crisis. You can see that we've partnered with numerous churches in our community, with community some, centers, with businesses and with other educational facilities to ensure that our students will have a safe place to go when or if we feel like our, our schools are threatened. And in the summer of 2018, we pursued grants through the Department of Justice. We're happy to report that we've been awarded over a million dollars, um, in funds to enhance the safety and security of our school community. The money will ensure that schools, all schools meet minimum standards of safety and security and also focuses on violence prevention. In order to better meet the unique needs that each student brings into the classroom, staff will be trained in digital threat assessments and adolescent mental health. Developing expertise in these areas will help staff address student needs as they arise and prevent crisis situations for individual students and others. Helping students arrive to school safely each morning is no small task. As we start the 2018-19 school year, we're again partnering with Student Transit to provide safe and reliable transportation for our students. As of today, students have logged more than 200,000 miles on buses already this year. There are 379 routes each day, staffed by more than 100 combined drivers and monitors. These Student Transit staff and others at Student Transit have ensured that our students arrive safely and ready to learn each school day. We also partner with the Eau Claire Police Department to provide support for adult and student crossing guards to help those who walk to school arrive safely. Our adult crossing guards are posted at busy intersections at 11 of our elementary schools. They spend more than 175 hours each week, ensuring our students who walk to school arrive safely. Our students and staff, our student staff and family and our community rely on the behind-the-scenes work in facilities, transportation and safety, not only to be in place, but to be running smoothly so that we can meet the diverse needs of our district. And these programs are the result of that work. The district has worked to provide a range of programs to inspire and prepare our students to live creative, fulfilling and responsible lives. And each of these programs are aligned to the strategic plan. As we develop these programs, as Abby said, we walk, we ask ourselves, how does it impact student achievement? How does it impact equity and uniformity? How does it impact organizational efficiency? How does it impact organizational efficiency? And how does it impact fiscal responsibility? And Mr. Schmidt is going to share with you the specifics of each of these programs, plus a bit more.
Good evening. So I'm going to dig into academic programming, which has become a board priority in the budget and which includes both academic achievement, the first board priority, and student social and emotional growth, the second board priority. We know kids need different things in order to succeed. As adults, we need a lot of strategies since each student is different, and we want to be proactive in meeting the needs of all students. As a result, the district has identified that our data for the past three to five years has been consistent in both English Language Arts and math, and the achievement gaps continue to increase as students get older. When looking at the structures and supports currently in place, we were able to identify gaps in meeting the needs of all students. Over the past year, a group of directors, principals, and school psychologists worked collaboratively to develop a revised multi-level system to support the document that you see up on the screen in front of you that will meet the needs of all students when strategically implemented. MLSS, the acronym to reflect this framework, will help the district identify priorities for implementation at a district level. That's Strategic Plan, or SPI, the Strategic Plan Initiative. And at the school level, the School Improvement Plans, or we call them SIPs. In August, administration focused on establishing and strengthening the foundational components of this framework: organizational structures, strong shared leadership, positive culture, and family-community partnerships. Over the next year, the MLSS framework will guide our work as a district, with district staff and principals. Through strong shared leadership, staff will build resources and tools that will support each component for a full rollout of the MLSS framework in the next school year and in all schools. MLSS is about academics and behaviors, and that behavior piece is the focus of students' social and emotional learning. This summer, a district team came together to start the process of analyzing and eventually making recommendations for social-emotional learning moving forward. Last spring, the Department of Public Instruction released the pre-K-12 Social Emotional Learning Competencies. Our focus will be to crosswalk and align those competencies pre-K-12 and to implement a comprehensive approach to teaching those lifelong skills. So Kim talked a little bit about the physical structures that we are putting in place to create a safe learning environment for our schools. We also recognize that we have to create a safe learning environment that also begins with building positive relationships together. To do this, we are working to equip staff and students with skills and strategies to attend to social-emotional needs. We know that when students are engaged in their learning and teachers have the skills to support all students, everyone benefits. Some of the work we're engaging in is continuing the school-based mental health services at school sites, and you can see the five different partners that we have. Also, Kim talked about Department of Justice grants. So this is required three hours of trauma-sensitive schools training, traumative-sensitive schools training for all full-time staff that will begin this fall. We have received a grant from Marshville Clinic and Security Health to train our staff in youth mental health first aid. This training will build on the capacity for all staff to work with all students in a culturally responsive way, and this work will impact our engagement in mental health indicators in positive ways. We also received a grant for mindfulness training for Memorial High School staff. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, the Social Emotional Learning Committee work has initiated this summer and continues this fall. So we want our students in school. Characteristics of successful students show that students are in attendance at least 90% of the time. All schools in the district have identified school-wide and classroom expectations according to the PBIS framework. Staff are teaching these expectations throughout the school year. Each school has Tier 1 and Tier 2 coaches to support this work in schools. This work has impacted the suspension rates in our district, so we have lots of data we could show you, but we thought we would highlight suspensions. And looking at your suspension data, we've seen a decrease in the number of students suspended from 2014 to 2017. We focus on, in the next portion of the slide, our African-American students because due to our district's disproportionality designation. In 2014, you can see we went from 10.6, and then last year we were down to 8.8. This work at the elementary level involves school counseling curriculum that provides lessons that focus on social-emotional learning, specific to relationship-building, problem-solving, and decision-making. These skills are strengthened through the day-to-day instruction and interactions of teachers and students, and specific indicators at the elementary level include behavior of lifelong learners that each student is assessed on three times a year, and that goes home on their report cards. Two years ago, we created Culture Responsive Briefs that were shared with all principals, and they use those briefs with their staff. And last school year, we were intentional about embedding Culture Responsive Practices into our literacy briefs that we shared with you regarding the literacy work that we will talk about in a few moments again. Movement, response, and discussion protocols are designed to increase student engagement and participation in culturally responsive ways, and this work should increase the engagement indicators for all students. At the Early Learning, we've also shared with you the Conscious Discipline as the Program used to teach and support young learners with social-emotional skills for self-regulation. This work will increase the number of students meeting the total protective factors assessed on the DEVRO assessment. More recently, the district has implemented Academic Career Planning, which you mentioned, Gwen, thank you. We had our first lesson at high school level again that was just recently instituted. ACP builds on the premise that students need to have strong 21st century skills, such as being problem solvers, exploring different courses and career paths, and preserving and persevering through difficult projects and tasks. ACP focuses on building relationships with others and networking as a way to support students and their goals. We're going to, and as you, I know you have the access to these slides, you're going to see the next few slides will have a similar pattern to them. It's going to be sharing our Wisconsin Student Assessment, or WSAS, the Wisconsin Student Assessment data. We call this the reading trends, but really, I want to share with you that the data from this year was the WKCE. This is the last year we're going to be sharing five-year trend data. This year is three different assessments with you. This year's 14-15 was the Badger exam, and this is the exam that was most closely aligned, was directly aligned to the Common Core standards. That was only instituted for one year, and because there was some concern about Common Core standards, the state moved to the Ford Exam, which is then reflected in the last three years. The Ford Exam, I would say, is guided by the Common Core as opposed to the Badger, which was directly aligned to the Common Core. And you'll see in the slides that follow, we consistently exceed state average. We also reflect the patterns of the state, so when you see the state go up, we go up. When you see the state go down, we go down. The district systems review initiated, the district systems review several years ago initiated a teaching and learning review of our English Language Arts System in alignment. The report indicated areas where growth is needed included, including consistency in the English Language Arts curriculum across sites, horizontal and vertical alignment between classes, grades, and schools, and unit plans, and aligning that with the Common Core standards. The Literacy Within Supportive Learning Environments team has used this review to drive our work with a focus on gap scores and disproportionality found in the Ford and ACT assessment results, and the ACT will show you in just a few moments. The literacy team has identified essential standards for writing, and again, I should note, this was a reading test up until here, but once you get to this year forward, it is both a combination of reading and writing. And so the initial work was in writing, both narrative, informative, argumentative, and research writing, and language, grammar, mechanics, and vocabulary. We developed a structure for pre-K-12 professional development addressing writing strategies for all instructional staff. This is something I've never seen, and this is my 29th year in the district. Additionally, this year, we will implement common writing units and common assessments horizontally aligned at all levels. Data will be collected so the staff can make informed instructional decisions. So instead of waiting for state assessments, we're going to have local data that will flow into our data warehouse and provide instantaneous data for our staff to make decisions on their students the next day. Next steps for the literacy team during the 2018-19 school year this year as we speak include identifying essential reading standards, foundational literature, information, and word study, and building professional learning development for all staff. The focus for professional development will be to develop understanding of systemic reading instruction within all grade levels and content areas, and future implementation will include the tools to support all learners, English learners, special education, gifted and talented students in the universal classroom instruction. So again, someone might wonder why the focus on writing first? ELA is both writing and reading. So our beginning work was writing, and now we're dipping into the reading work starting later this year. And so you'll see, this is that trend, this is looking at grades 3 through 8. This is looking at grade 3 because grade 3 is one of those indicator grades for reading and the scores of our students. And again, in each of these, you can keep repeating to yourself, exceed states, exceed the state work, and reflecting the state patterns. This is the ACT Aspire, which is the assessment given in grade 9. And this is looking at a five-year trend in grade 10. It was given to 10th graders and reported that way for a few more years than grade 9. Again, exceed state, reflect their pattern. This is looking now at the mathematics, our mathematics data, and again, we see some very similar patterns to what we saw with the English Language Arts. Grade 8 is one of those key years, one of those indicator years for math. ACT Aspire, again, that's the tool that's used, which is different. So the Ford Exam is used in grades 3 through 8, and the ACT Aspire is used in grades 9 and 10. So you see this in both grade 9 and then 10. And then the ACT Composite. And we want to share with you, with the ACT, this is, the line is the ACT statewide, and the ACT statewide is the score that is represented on the student's 11th grade assessment. What's not shared in this, from the state, and which we share with you in parentheses below, is the highest score that our students receive. So the value is the highest score of our graduates, which is consistently a full point higher than the score that's on the 11th grade assessment, that one-day assessment. We've learned that the state doesn't report the highest score, they report the 11th grade score, and that does not accurately reflect the achievement of our students. The highest score is what's reported to universities and colleges and shows our students and our, shows the universities and colleges that our students are ready for that level of work. This is the ACT Work Keys, which is given the day after the 11th grade ACT assessment for all juniors. It's becoming an increasingly important indicator, and we are working with the Chamber of Commerce to have Eau Claire become the first certified work-ready community in the state of Wisconsin. The Chamber is working with our employers to use this score as part of the interview process, and the score works as an insurance to employers that our students are ready for the workplace. And so this is something that has been, an assessment that's been given for a while but is gaining traction in our community as one of the measures that is used for greeting students into a workplace. I always love walking up here and seeing these four banners behind me, looking at our Advanced Placement work and what the College Board has recognized our district. And you can see the four posters behind me, were not by accident. We, with intentionality, we want more students to take Advanced Placement programming, that's the blue bar. We want more students to take the test, that's the orange bar. Test has a fee, so students have to, there's clearly skin in the game for them to take the test. And we want more students to take it. And one of the things we've seen is as more students take it, more students are passing. The rate of passing has been maintaining with the increased student participation. And finally, the last piece of data I'll share with you is our post-secondary credits. Two years ago, you can see that we had 79.3% are earning post-secondary credits, and so these would be Advanced Placement, it would be Dual Credit, something that's done between CVTC and/or UW-Eau Claire in the district. It could be Youth Options, which is now early college credit. Project Search for our special needs students, Life Without Limits, so having our students in those post-secondary experiences. So we've identified this as an important goal, and you can see, and we are already, our goal for this year is 85%. And I can report to you that mid-year, or early in the year, we're at 72% already with still another semester to go. So we are on track to meet that goal for next year. And we continue to optimize our offerings in our Academic Career Planning Guide and work with students through the ACP process, and hope that we can definitely report back to you that we hit that 85% after this year. So in our next phase, Kay will report to you regarding our high-quality staff and class size.
Tripping on a little leg down here. So as previously indicated, the high-quality staff and class size was a priority that the board had established early on. And in my part of the presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about demographics related to the high-quality staff, speak a little bit about the recent staffing process, and then end with some comments regarding recruiting and maintaining those high-quality staff. Okay, so when we start to look at the demographics for our teachers, we always like to start with promoting the fact that obviously all of our teaching staff have their bachelor's degree, and just over 50% of our staff have their master's. So if we look at the fact that we have 872 teachers and 476 of them have their master's, that's just over 54%. And then we have another 32 who are nationally board-certified for 3.7% of staff having those as well. When we look at the professional staff count for elementary, what we see here in this piece is the fact that this compares the student enrollment to the FTE in the building. So when you look at the buildings that have additional resources provided to them through either AGR or Title Resources, you'll see that the blue line will exceed their orange bar. And so basically, what that's indicating is the orange bar is the student enrollment. If there's additional resources that are provided to them through those additional funding sources, their blue line will exceed that, indicating that there are more FTE available to support the students in those buildings because of that piece. So there you can see that there's 400.5 FTE for the enrollment of just over 5,000 students at the elementary level. Same type of information for the secondaries. Again, two of our buildings, both the Long and North Star, have our Title Funding. And again, if you look at the student enrollment and the FTE of the blue line, same type of information, we've got 402.9 to shy of 300, I'm sorry, just shy of 403 FTE, and almost 5,700 students enrolled. Looking at elementary teaching experience. This is always the interesting piece. And as we move forward through ESA reporting, which will be coming up as a new fund report that we'll need to look into reporting specifically per building, this is always the piece that we take a big look at to make sure that we're not either overloading one building with all of our veteran staff or under-representing one building with all of our brand-new staff. So you can see here that the average total years for teaching experience for elementary ranges from 10.9 to 16.9. So as you look across the board, it's always, this is just one of my most interesting graphs that we look at every year when we do the opening of schools report, because it's always interesting to see the turnover of staff and where those years of teaching experience fall. So there's your elementary information, and then the secondary. Secondary, you can see, ranges from 12.6 to 18.2. We know that there's an importance of students being able to see themselves in their books, in their curriculum materials, and in their teachers, and we continue to work to ensure that our staff reflects the students that we serve. On the slide, you can see that there are schools in our district that provide students the opportunity to engage with a racially diverse staff, and that's both in our certified staff as well as our support staff. This continues to be a focus of hiring practices in the district, and we continue to work on this as we work through the staffing process each year. Support staff. The support staff positions in the district are critical to everything that we do in supporting the students in the district. Each year, we share where numbers are at a given point in time for some of the support staff positions in the district. You can see, as always, our Special Ed Assistants are the highest number of support staff positions that we have in the district. And our bilingual education assistants, those positions have increased over the five years that we've been doing this report. So those numbers continue to climb, but in a nutshell, those two positions remain to be areas that we continue to focus on in providing supports to the diverse needs of the kids in the district. Again, elementary support staff positions within the district. Again, elementary support staff positions within the district that support our kids at the elementary level. You can see that it's listed by FTE. Total of 200, almost 220 FTE in our support staff positions within the elementary level. Just over, supporting just over 5,100 kids. Secondary support staff. Just shy again of the 5,700 students and almost 163 FTE. So, this is a pretty exciting slide. You might remember that back in May, we spent some time talking about the staffing process, and at that point in time, I indicated to the Board that we had conducted a staff audit. And at that point in time, we learned some pieces of information related to the fact that our elementary numbers related to targeted class sizes, that our elementary numbers came in at the targeted range, and that our secondary numbers were either below the targeted range or they were at the low level of the targeted range. So at that point in time, we talked about the fact that we did some adjusting of class sizes at the secondary level to meet the guidelines. And as a result of doing that, we had some staff that were unassigned. So we reassigned those staff throughout the district, and in many cases, those staff members switched levels, and they were able to fill positions that were vacant due to resignations or retirements for this next school year. And what that did in the end is it alleviated the fact for us to need to hire externally for those vacancies. So what that did in the end is it created a 12.9 FTE that we held in reserve. And we talked about that back in May, that we were going to have this reserve of FTE that we were going to use, and the goal being that when additional student needs were identified, we'd be able to use a portion of that 12.9 reserve FTE to fill those, and then hopefully we wouldn't need to deplete that, and then in the end, there wouldn't be a need to add to the, to add to the budget, to add to the budget for the unanticipated student needs. So that was the information that we shared back in May. And then as we went through the staffing process, we learned that, as you can anticipate, that we are a student-need-driven organization. Our staffing process accentuates the fact that we don't produce widgets, that we are rather a high-performing, or that we have high-performing students, and we meet those students where they're at to be able to move them forward, to grow in their own education. And as a result, there were additional needs. So even prior to the end of last school year, we identified student needs in both the area of class size and student need. And so with that, we had three FTEs that we used out of that 12.9 reserve to be able to reduce class sizes at the elementary level. So you can see that we added a class at Mann's. We added a class at Putnam, and we added a class at Lake Shore. And again, that was all before last school year even ended, before the summer even began. In addition to that, that was for class size reduction. We also had student needs that came up, and those were in the area of special education. So from that standpoint, we added a .5 FTE at South. We added a .5 FTE at North Star, and we added a 1.0 FTE at DeLonge. So going into the summer months, which is the most unpredictable time for any staffing process, our 12.9 reserve FTE was now down to 6.9. So with that, we ended up adding an additional 1.0 to the English Language Learner Program, and that was with a .6 at Memorial, an additional .4 at DeLonge. Once we got close to reevaluating the additional needs, we determined that there was Title I resources of 2.5 FTE that were required, and those fell into the area of Mann's at 1.0, Northwoods at 1.0, DeLonge at .4, and North Star at .1. After that, there were coaching or interventionist positions that were required, and that was a total of 2.0 FTE. And that was Lake Shore at the K3 level, and Sherman again at the K3 level. Both of those were 1.0 positions. We also added a early learning special education position that was 1.0 FTE in addition to an early learning position that was not special ed, which was a 1.0 FTE. And then finally, there was two positions for middle school math that were added, each that were a .2, one that went to DeLonge, and one that went to South. So you can see we worked diligently to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students as those needs arose and we became aware of them. Everything you see up on the screen resulted in occupying the entire 12.9 FTE that we had in reserve. So that meant anything else coming forward was going to be an additional expense to the budget. So just prior to the school year starting, and immediately thereafter, it was evident that with that, there were increasing diversity needs that were happening in the district. So with that, we were able to identify that due to class size at DeLonge, we needed to add a sixth-grade teacher for a 1.0, and due to class size at Robbins, we needed to add a kindergarten teacher for a 1.0. So those were two additional FTE that were outside of the 12.9 that we had set aside. So those were additions to the budget that we had not anticipated. Additionally, but still, so outside of the certified area, but also still a significant addition, is the fact that we needed to add approximately 19 positions to our special education assistance. And Abby alluded to this in her budget presentation. So the majority of these FTEs or positions are a direct result of a student's educational, or individualized education plan. And I'm sure most of you know that that's a legal document that indicates the specific needs of each individual student, and as such, the district is required to provide those services. So because it's legally mandated, we're providing those services to make sure that our students are getting the services that they need. But because of that, you can see that at all of these locations, we've needed to add 19 positions to our special education assistant area to be able to meet the needs of our special education students. In addition to the SCA positions, there are additional positions that the district needed to add in the areas of bilingual education assistance, which I spoke about on an earlier slide, due to the increased number of students who we serve here in the district whose first language is not English. To support these students within our classrooms, additional BEAs or bilingual education assistant time is required. There's also a need for students to be supported in the areas of sign language, healthcare, Head Start, and general school assistance. And so in all of these areas, as I go through here, you will see the school building that their need is at, the FTE that is allocated. And these were all, again, additional needs that came up after the reserved FTE had been utilized. And all of these are, in most cases, I mean, these are needs that are a requirement due to the specialized needs of students that are coming into our district so that we can meet those students where they're at and move them forward in their programming. So when we look at when our staff leave us, we typically have looked at a five-year turnover rate. So you can see that, for the most part, resignations and retirements over the past five years have been the key factors. Obviously, our new compensation model went into place in between that time period. So we would anticipate that we would see some of those resignations fall off within the next several years. But you can also see that there's a summary of the reasons that people had given when they choose to give us a reason, which we don't always receive. This is a five-year summary broke down by by year and percentage of turnover. It also indicates how many are retirements out of that percentage. What I want to point out with this is that the numbers are a little confusing because the year goes from July to June. So for example, the 2018-19, you can see that there's already a .81 percentage of turnover, even though our school year just started. So what I've asked is for our staff to start going back to look at, not only doing it in our fiscal year, like all of this is listed, but also beginning to look at the same data in changing the timeframe so that it, we can look at it from a school year standpoint, so that that's going from September to August, from a beginning of a school year timeframe through the summer to the next school year. Because then I think that some of these numbers will be shifting, and it'll give us a clearer picture about when those resignations are actually happening. Because I think this is a little skewed based upon the timeframe of which that snapshot is taken. So I think that when we come to next year, this might look a little bit different. And then what we did was we took last year's and broke it down. But again, I think that once we start tweaking the timeframe of which we look at this data, it's going to look different. And the reason that I'm saying that is because originally, prior to the compensation model being put into place, the number of resignations that we had for people going to another district was one of our high numbers, and I think that moving forward, that that should be less. And so I'm kind of surprised that it's still where it's at. And so I think that if we look at changing the timeframe of which we evaluate the data, that I think that we'll see, we'll see a difference in things. So we'll see next year when we come back to you if that information has changed. Recruiting and Maintaining High-Quality Staff. So with this information, there's a couple of pieces that I know that probably Budget Development Committee is tired of hearing about as we talk about these things in those meetings. But there's, there's some things that we do here in the district that when either myself or Megan Price, the HR manager in our department, go out and participate in recruitment fairs or job fairs, different opportunities to recruit staff to come and work in our district, there's just some staples of things that we talk about and promote on a regular basis. One of those is the school year calendar, which we all know is a wonderful tool, and it's unique to our school district and nobody else in, nobody else in the state. And so I utilize that as a great recruitment tool. We've, we're going on, Jim and I will be starting to develop the calendar shortly here, and we will be going on year five of that unique tool. That tool supports staff members. It provides us an opportunity to train our staff, to allow them an opportunity to collaborate and work together, and that's something that you don't see in other school districts in our state. And so we use that as a great opportunity to try to recruit people to come and work in our district with us. And that tool has been around now for as long as it has, that it's really just, as I said, kind of a staple, and it's just institutionalized in who we are and what we do. The second piece, the Mentor Program. Again, Budget Development's talked a lot about this, and you've also talked about it in your budget discussions. But another very highly effective piece of what we use in recruiting, there isn't, there isn't a fair that we go to or a university that we go to where candidate's looking to find a place to call home. Don't ask us, what is it that you have in place that's going to help me be successful? Very different than many, many years ago when it was all about us asking them what they're going to do for us. That has changed, and now it's them asking us, what are you going to do for me? And how are you going to make sure that I'm successful in your organization? So the Mentor Program has been a huge recruitment tool for us as we go out and try to attract people to our district. Diversity in Hiring. It's been a discussion point in our district for many years, and it's become a focal point within the past several years. Steps taken to be able to increase diversity among the staff employed in the district over the past several years include varied recruitment fairs, establishing community partnerships, the Educator Rising Program, and implicit bias training. So the community partnerships that were established between the HR Department and the Mung African American and the Hispanic Latino Associations were something we've worked on for the past year and a half now. And the goal of that work is to be able to work with the community partners and the leaders in those areas to break down the barriers that are preventing our community, our, our community residents from seeking employment opportunities within the district. That work is ongoing. It doesn't happen overnight, but we've really appreciated the partnerships that we've made with those local organizations, and we look forward to continuing to work with them as we break down those barriers and try to make the district a more appealing place for employment. The Educator Rising Program currently supports high school students who seek to have an interest in developing employment in the field of education. So it's, it's very similar to DECA or FFA or any other high school program where students in high school identify with an area that they're interested in when they leave, when they leave high school. So the HR Department and the Teaching and Learning Department are looking to partner with the leaders of the Educator Rising Program, teachers out in the buildings here in the district who are working with our high school students in this area. And we're looking to partner with them to see if between the program in the buildings and then our two departments, if we can't expand what they're currently doing and try to look to specifically target students of color who hadn't considered going into the field of education, maybe not particularly as a teacher. But there's a lot of things you can do in the field of education that isn't necessarily teaching. And so we want to make sure that everybody's understanding that there are many opportunities available. So we're going to see if we can't partner with them to make sure that we can expand those opportunities. And then the implicit bias, bias training. So over the past summer, participants that were part of the administrative vacancies were part of a new initiative aimed at educating participants of their own personal bias and how, how it can be recognized and how they can utilize strategies throughout the interview process to assure that they're being as objective as possible in the review of candidates. It was a successful training, and it's aided with the improvement of the overall hiring process. So we're looking throughout this year to train our building principals so that they can utilize that same program within their buildings and then have that filter down into all of the training, or I'm sorry, all of the hiring that they do within their buildings so we can expand upon what we've done here at the district level throughout the summer. Another, I'm sorry, okay. Another recruiting and maintaining high-quality staff is just the health, wellness, and safety that we do here in the district. The Holistic Committee sets out a goal that we try to accomplish each year to work to keep our employees healthy and well. And we were able to, at least we believe we were able to reach that goal. We'll find out in two weeks, but we, it all looks very positive to this point. Our district's Employee Wellness Program, which happens at the building levels, reliving our EAP provider, and then our workers' compensation programs. And we've talked about this before. Abby alluded to it with the workers' compensation piece and the safety programs that we have going on in the buildings. The financial component to that, workers' compensation costs were down for the 18-19 school year, which resulted in over $100,000 in savings to the district. In addition, we received an annual dividend for work comp that exceeded $72,000 for the 17-18 school year and just over $50,000 in the previous year. A review of the employee injury data shows that a steady decrease in the amount of workers' comp claims as well as a smoother transition and a faster transition for the injured employee has worked to bring people back to work more quickly. And then our district EAP And then our district EAP provider, Real Living, continues to provide quality services for our district employees. And our utilization rate with our employees utilizing those resources continues to exceed industry standard and has for the past four years. Supervisor/Manager Training is another thing that we use to try to maintain our high-quality staff here within the district. This is a program we started in 13-14 with management positions. We've expanded that over the past four years to include more positions, different positions, and now this past year have expanded it to not just be focused on HR-related items, but we're expanding it into other specific areas from both the Teaching and Learning and the Executive Director of Administration's area as well. A huge part in, I think, what makes Eau Claire set aside from other employee, or sorry, other school districts is the fact that we provide our employees a voice, whether it's the fact that we welcome employees to be part of committees that we have in the district, or we provide them an opportunity to come in and meet with us, or we go out to buildings and meet with them, whatever the case. There are so many opportunities for employees to have a voice on things that happen in the district and for them to be able to affect change. After Act 10, that didn't occur in many, many districts throughout the state, and we continue to make that happen. We foster that, and we look forward to that opportunity to be able to have our employees at the table with us as we look to make positive change in the district. Employee Benefits, Health Insurance, the Near-Sight Clinic, Defined Contributions, Long-Term Disability, the District-Wide Sick Leave Bank, all of these are key things that I think set us apart from other districts. And again, we use these things to try to keep the employees that we have here, and we use these as pieces of information to try to bring people to our team here in Eau And then finally, our Recruitment Initiatives. We've taken some of these off. You may remember that in the past, this list has been longer. We've been very picky about where we're going to put our money and where we're going to go to be able to try to recruit people. And so, you can see Megan and I there trying to welcome people to ECSD Inspires, come be part of our team. So, we're just being more selective about where we're going to spend money trying to recruit people, and so far, it's been positive. So, questions? This is not a great picture. Questions for any one of us?
Well, first, thank you to the three of you, and I'm sure to the huge team of people that helped you compile this presentation for us. It's wonderful just to see all the amazing things happening. So, Commissioner Humboldt, I know that you had a question.
Yeah, I had two questions, and I'll do them really quick. Kay, the Educator Rising, that, where did that come out of?
Well, I had first initially heard of it at a conference, and I want to say it was Washington School District. But I also know that Dave, was it your group, that worked with it through ECIE and Amy Trainer? And so, yeah, I think it was kind of a, like, kind of at the same time type of a thing?
So, that's professional development or something that's provided through WAC and through the union? Because they have--
Are you asking me that or telling me?
I'm just saying that there is a connection there with the union?
I don't know if it's a union piece. I just know that Amy Trainer's one. I know that Amy is one of the people who is one of the staff leaders of this.
Yeah, there is a connection there, and I think it's across the state as well. So, I think that's a nice connection. That's what I want to comment on. The other thing I wanted to ask was about when you talked about concentrating on those gap scores with literacy in that piece, where we're looking at the state and our comparison with the state. I had a question about other states that may be functioning higher. We can't necessarily compare apples to oranges, right?
The assessments are different.
Yeah. So, when we look at where we've been kind of hovering for quite a while, I don't know, as we look at the budget and we look at some of those pieces about what do you foresee in the future? I mean, I see the 80%, and that's kind of where we want to head to. Can you talk a little bit about, I mean, I look at us as being, we do well, and we are above the state average, but certainly, in my mind, you know, all districts in Wisconsin could be doing better. And so, help me with that.
Yep. So, Dave's team has worked very diligently on the professional development around both the English language arts in both writing and now starting with reading. For the, like I mentioned, the first time, we actually have an articulated program in writing pre-K-12 with localized assessments. So, you used to have to wait for the state assessment to come out before you'd actually be able to respond and say, you know, "What can we do to be better?" What they're trying to do is build that mechanism so that we can respond more immediately. At the same time, we're working with principals on being stronger with their professional leadership, community development, and sustaining those efforts within their buildings. Because if you have your, if you have a localized common assessment, the staff, you have to coach your staff to use that data to improve instruction immediately instead of waiting, you know, for a longer period of time. So, we're pretty excited that we're going to be able to be much more agile in terms of our reaction to students and what they're telling us than in the past.
Thank you. Commissioner Harker?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks too for this incredible report. It's really just a reminder of the scale that this district operates on, and it's just so impressive to me. And it's kudos, from my perspective, to the teachers, the principals, to all the staff, and to the administrative staff here downtown. Just keeping it all going is really daunting and impressive. So, thank you for that. I wanted to, a lot of stuff to unpack here, but one that stood out for me was the staff turnover question, and that those numbers weren't going down quite as quickly as we might have expected, the staff turnover rate, especially with the compensation changes that we've had over the last couple of years. We would hope to see those numbers a little more. And Kay, I think it was you who spoke a little bit to how we might look into that a little bit more deeply, but would you, could you reiterate and expand on that just a bit?
So, the way that that information is compiled in here shows here. So, for example, if you look at 15-16 and you see that the turnover rate is 10.42, and 16-17 is 7.4. So, the cutoff for that data is July to June, July 1 to June 30. But people still leave after June 30. So, people will leave all through July and into August. And so, anything, any of those resignations that happened in July and August wouldn't show up in, say, if it was in 14-15, wouldn't show up in 14-15, it would show up in 15-16, when really, we would think of that as those people left in the 14-15 school year before the 15-16 school year. But because of the way just that the contracts go, we house that information in the previous year. So, when I look at it like this, I think that it looks very different than what we would, you know, think of. So, I want to tweak that information to move those two months of data back to the school year that you would think of it as before the next school year started and see if that makes a difference in how those numbers look.
See for seeing something more like we would hope to see.
Yes.
And then if we're not, I guess, go from there, right?
Yep. Because if it doesn't change things, then we'll have to dig a little bit deeper and say, "Why are people still leaving?" You know, two years into the new compensation model.
Exactly, yeah. Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I don't see any other microphone lights on. So, thank you very much for this report, and I'm sure board members will have time to digest this and email questions or comments they may have later on. So, thank you very much. Because this is a committee report, does anyone from the audience wish to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion and possible first reading of revisions to Policy 831, was formally called Tobacco Use on School Premises. It's been renamed and revised Tobacco and Vaping-Free Zones on School Property and Events. It incorporates sample language from the Department of Public Instruction. We've also received feedback from the Police Department and the Health Department on this topic. So, you'll see it's pretty much an entire rewrite, more clear definitions, more broad definitions. This is something that has been specifically talked about by our administrators and our SROs, who really would like some more clear language on this piece so that they can enforce it and ensure a safe and healthy school environment. So, if no one has questions, we can do a first reading, and feel free to stop as we go if you have anything you'd like to bring up. So, I'll read this one, and then the other two policies, I want two other volunteers for those. The ECASD School Board recognizes that the use of tobacco products and vaping devices are a health, safety, and environmental hazard for students, staff, visitors, and school facilities. The Board is acutely aware of the serious health risks associated with the use of tobacco products and vaping devices, both to users and non-users. The Board embraces its obligation to promote positive role models in schools and to provide an environment for learning and working that is safe, healthy, and free from unwanted smoke and tobacco use for the students, staff, and visitors. It shall be a violation of this policy for any student of ECASD to possess, consume, display, or sell any tobacco products, tobacco-related devices, or vaping devices at any time on school property or at off-campus, school-sponsored events. It shall be a violation of this policy for any staff, administrator, board member, or visitor of ECASD to consume, display, or sell any tobacco products, tobacco-related devices, or vaping devices at any time on school property or at off-campus, school-sponsored events. Definitions. The term "anytime" means during normal school and non-school hours. The term "vaping device" means any oral device that provides a vapor of liquid nicotine and/or other substance, and the use or inhalation of which stimulates smoking, including e-cigarettes, e-cigars, e-pipes, e-hukas, or devices under any other product name or descriptor. The term "school property" means all property under control of the school district, whether owned, rented, or leased, including but not limited to all vehicles. The term "tobacco product" means any product containing, made, or derived from tobacco that are intended for human consumption, whether chewed, smoked, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, snorted, sniffed, or ingested by any other means, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, dry snuff, moist snuff, chewing tobacco, and snooze. The term "tobacco-related devices" means ashtrays, cigarette papers, or pipes for smoking, or any components, parts, or accessories of vaping devices, including cartridges. Enforcement. The success of this policy will depend upon the thoughtfulness, consideration, and cooperation of both tobacco users and non-users. All individuals on school premises, including students, staff, administrators, board members, and visitors, share in the responsibility for adhering to and enforcing this policy. We just have to add "S" to "board members." You see that, Patty? Okay. Visitors, visitors who are observed violating this policy shall be asked to comply with this policy. If the visitor fails to comply with the request, his or her violation of the policy may be referred to the building principal or other school district supervisory personnel available. The supervisor shall make a decision on further action that may include a directive to leave school property. Repeated violation may result in a recommendation to the superintendent to prohibit the individual from entering school district property for a specified period of time. If he or she refuses to leave, the police may be called. So, that is the new policy. It'll lead to additional guidelines as well, but mainly, this is providing some additional tools for folks in district and the SROs. The current policy on the books, while it prohibits tobacco products and e-cigarettes, so products containing nicotine, the difficulty is it's very difficult for current personnel to ascertain whether or not some of these devices do contain that. So, there's a lot of ambiguity there. So, just having a blanket prohibition of the vaping devices is the goal of this. So, are there any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move that one for our next meeting for approval. And the next one is as a result of the new ESA federally, that we need to have a new participation, family engagement policy. So, this was drafted by Teaching and Learning and reviewed by our committee with a few changes made. So, I would take a volunteer to read this policy.
All right.
Okay.
The Eau Claire Area School District will engage families in two-way and meaningful communication, addressing student wellbeing and achievement by ensuring that family members play an integral role in assisting their child's learning, are encouraged to be actively involved in their child's education, and are full partners in their child's education and are included as appropriate in decision-making and on advisory committees to assist in the education of their child. In alignment with Section 1116A2 of Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, the Eau Claire Area School District agrees to engage families in the joint planning and development of the district's Title I Plan through representation on the district ESSA team. Engage families in an annual local review of the Title I program and use the results of the annual review to address any identified barriers to family participation, to meet the needs of families, to help their children learn, and to identify successful family engagement strategies. Operate the Family Advisory Council, FAC, to help review this policy and provide a formal mechanism for families to give feedback to the board and administration. The FAC shall strive to reflect the demographics of students served by the district and include at least one family representative from each district school. Engage families in developing, implementing, and reviewing school-family compacts. A school-family compact is a written agreement between the school and the families of children enrolled in schools participating in Title I Part A programs that identifies the activities that the families, the entire school staff, and the students will undertake to share the responsibility for improved student academic achievement. In addition, the school-family compact outlines the activities that the families, school staff, and students will undertake to build and develop a partnership to help the children achieve the state's high academic standards. Family events are arranged by the district to facilitate the completion of these compacts. Engage families in planning and developing effective family engagement activities. Build capacity for school-family engagement by providing family members with information on state standards, assessment requirements of Title I, monitoring their child's progress, and working with educators. Providing materials, resources, and training to help families work with their children to improve social and emotional development and academic achievement. Implementing a two-way communication system with families that provides information in clear and understandable terms and surveys families for feedback about district programming. Collaborating with business leaders and community organizations to offer opportunities for family-school engagement, coordinating family engagement activities with other federal, state, and local programs, including preschool, after-school programs, home visiting, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Any questions or comments regarding that policy? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move that for approval at our next meeting as well. And that takes us to our final agenda item under Committee Reports for tonight, which is revisions to Policy 447.1, Staff Use of Physical Force, Secclusion, Restraint. There's one additional section regarding discussion and interpretation, research-based, evidence-informed strategies and interventions. So, this was, came from Teaching and Learning, Student Services, and some other stakeholders who looked at it and provided feedback. So, we don't have to read the whole policy, we just need to read this one section. So, if someone would like to read that? Aaron? Commissioner Harker? Thank you.
Discussion and Interpretation. The Eau Claire Area School District uses positive behavioral strategies, supports, and interventions-- strategies, supports, and interventions to create and maintain a safe, caring, and respectful environment for students and staff. Using positive behavioral strategies, supports, and interventions as part of a comprehensive crisis prevention and intervention plan can diffuse challenging and disruptive behavior before an incident escalates to a crisis situation. These prevention and early intervention strategies emphasize non-physical disengagement methods for preventing or managing disruptive behavior. Physical restraints are only to be used as a last resort when an individual becomes an immediate danger to self or others. All staff should be aware of the recommended disengagement supports and strategies and physical restraints to prevent and respond to disruptive behavior. All teaching, administrative, and support staff who serve students with individual education plans are required to have district-approved training in positive behavioral strategies, supports, and interventions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this section? Okay. Oh, yes, Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yeah, just a type or a grammar thing. Could we have a comma after supports in the first? Strategies, supports, comma, and interventions? What do they call that? The Oxford comma? I'm a big fan of that. I was, I couldn't figure out the first sentence when you were reading.
You know, you see where she's talking about, Patty? Okay. I think we can do that as a friendly amendment. Oxford comma. All right. Anything else? Okay, then we'll have that for approval at the next meeting with the Oxford comma. All right. That takes us then to our requests for future agenda items. Are there any such requests? Okay. Did you have a request, Commissioner Torres?
I don't.
Oh, okay. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second? Okay. All of us in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thanks.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.